We'll go ahead and get started. Hopefully Jamie will show up. I'll call this regular meeting of the planning board to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first action is approval of the minutes from our July 26 meeting. Pretty lengthy. I knew as soon as we started.
I like to make an appearance.
I want to thank Mary for her diligent notes. It's not often we get a four-page. Any questions or comments upon the minutes? There were a couple of typos that Mary caught and corrected.
And mine.
Including it. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Right.
Opposed? Carrie, thanks. We have two items on the agenda tonight under old business. And actually, I just want to give some clarity because the agenda doesn't say much. For the La Madre landing, the developer has submitted, you should have all received the updated plans that were based on earlier plans, conversations here, conversations with some other folks. We also received a letter from the engineer with some questions, I believe, on that as well. You should have all received that, which are dated today, I guess.
Yeah.
Losing track of time. So with the -- pardon my open my phone. This proposal is for the multi-acre site off of Smokey Hollow to build a 52-unit, two-story apartment complex for folks with special needs. The plans that were submitted look familiar in several regards. I think the developer sought a lot of input from folks at this meeting, folks from here, members of the board, and some of the public, neighbors specifically. I don't know if we have a representative from -- if you wanted to make some comments on your.
Could you guys go up to the table, see if I can use the microphone?
Is what I'll call your formal application. I don't know if you -- did you receive the letter from Greg? We received it today. So I haven't had a chance to --
Right.
I've read through it, but I haven't had a chance to read it. I think we're on the same boat there. I did read it, Greg. I did read it.
All right. So hello, my name is Shazi Mawawi, I'm with Passaro Associates. We're here on behalf of our client, Christopher Community. Also here is Audrey Arwaji, who is development manager for Christopher. And as far as, do you want me to go through the project again, or just over the things that have changed since the last time?
Yeah, I think everyone except Terry was here. She's caught up quite a bit. But yeah, I think the things that have changed and things that were specific to, you know, some of the conversations we had most recently. I noticed that the drawings do show outlines of the foliage and the setbacks and the things that Greg also mentions in his letter as well. But I think for expedience sake, we could do that unless there's an objection from anybody else. I think everybody feels pretty up to speed. Speaking for Terry.
No, I researched it down.
All right. So last meeting, I wasn't here, but Dave Cox was, and we had two different options that we're looking at and configurations. And as you see, we did end up going with the parking on the south side of the building towards the St. Mary's community. That gives us, allows us to have a larger buffer between the neighbors on the backside up on, what was that road? That's Edgewood. So it increases that buffer also, since it's the back of the building, there's less lighting there. So there's going to be less, you know, light pollution or not. It's all going to be dark sky compliant anyways, but fewer lights on that side of the building, less glow. It allows us to keep more of the existing trees. We also are proposing, and it doesn't show up on here because this is a site plan, but some plantings in some of these areas where the trees will be a little thinner. We put in a six-foot vinyl fence back there. But the main thing is the building is going to act as that buffer to reduce the noise and the commotion, you know, just the, whether it's, I know it was brought up a couple months ago, you know, snow plows, things like that. So the building is now between those neighbors and that parking lot. It also gives better fire access, not just to the La Madre landing, but also to the neighboring property of St. Mary's by having this access on the south side of the building. We did get a wetland survey done, and they did find actually pretty extensive wetlands down here off the hill. So we have taken out the trail that was proposed before because there's, it's all wetland down there. We did a hydrant flow test and found there's, you know, sufficient flows. I mean, the pressures aren't great in that area, but the flows are good and there's enough to service this project. We also did some infiltration tests. The soils up there are actually great as far as infiltration goes. We got 30 inches in one location and 30 inches per hour, 10 inches per hour in another, which is outstanding. So that works well for stormwater management, which we've got all the stormwater management out towards Smokey Hollow Road so that we don't send more stormwater down into the wetlands. And then there's an existing swell along Smokey Hollow Road that it will go to. There is sanitary sewer on our side of the street, so that connection should be easy. The water main also is on our side of the street, so there shouldn't be any disruption to traffic or anything like that. And, you know, one of the comments that I wrote was about access, pedestrian access out to the road, which we can definitely add those kind of things in. So is there anything that you wanted to add?
So if the, well, I'll turn it back over to the board if you guys have any questions or comments.
I've got just a quick question.
Thank you.
You mentioned the buffer has minimized since the last original plans. I don't have the original plans in front of me, but I see now they're anywhere between 40, 40 feet to 50 feet depending on the proposed building, if I'm reading that correctly. What was the before buffer? And you said it's changed to those adjacent homeowners parcels. What was it before compared to what is it now?
So I want to say that the buffer with the original plan was 30 feet, but it was much smaller because when they had the parking up here, it just went closer to the buildings, the way the layout was. So by switching those, it increases to 50.
I believe we also have a building even closer to the board, but I believe we have a building at just 10 feet setback.
I can't, sorry, I can't.
I believe we had the, in one of our, it was like a very, very first iteration, and it was 10 feet of setback, so we increased that.
Yeah. The first time it was mentioned, maybe putting the building towards the neighbors and stuff, that first iteration did show 10 feet, but that was obviously changed. So yeah, we've, out of the different options we looked at, this one gives the neighbors to the north the biggest buffer. And as far as the building goes, it's all 50 feet. When you look at 40, that's over there where the parking is and the dumpster.
So the building itself, if you do it, parking is between 38 to 40 depending on, or actually it's 40.
So that 38 is the fence along the parking, correct?
Just a question around the north elevation. You know, the very specific railings and windows, but nothing for the exterior lighting on that side of the building? Is there an estimate of how many exterior lights would be along the north elevation since that's the, you know, the longest elevation and that's the side that's directly adjacent to the Edgewood properties? I didn't notice any notifications lighting.
That I would have to get back to you on. I don't know the answer to that.
We haven't finalized lighting, the lighting plans yet, so.
Are those actual balconies or just for looks?
Juliet balcony.
Yeah, like a Juliet balcony?
Yeah, it says Juliet.
If it was an exterior balcony, then there'd definitely be lights, but.
Yeah, no, it says Juliet balcony.
Okay.
Other, excuse me, other questions?
I have a comment about, has the fire department reviewed the turnaround?
Not yet.
Okay.
And that was something I think Greg.
Yeah, I was just wondering if that's enough space for them to turn around because we all know how they need to back out with good reason.
The question I had too, and it's mentioned a couple times in the engineers study, the relationship between this parcel and the St. Mary's parcel. Do you own the whole thing? Because there are certain things that are required, I think, like some of the tree removal, couple other, the runoff, couple other things like that. And I don't know if you wanted to elaborate on that, Greg?
I think even if it's two separate parcels, even if they're going to be under the same ownership today, I would want an easement between the two parcels for anything that kind of crosses, whether it's the stormwater, fire access, just anything like that. Just because someday it may change ownership.
Okay.
You know, there's nothing forever. I think the fire department may look at that turnaround and decide it's long enough or maybe it needs a couple more feet, but if they're on the right track.
Right. Oh, yeah. I just, I know they have specifics and they don't like to back out. I also wonder what, sometimes their concerns about being in an area like that between two buildings if there is a fire and a collapse too. I'm not the fireman.
Yeah, I mean, I like it better because it gives the St. Mary's apartment a little more protection.
Yeah, oh, I agree.
Fire around there.
I agree.
I mean, there's a lot of pluses to this plan versus the original plans for like things like that.
Yeah, that's kind of my suggestion to move it in board anyway. I just want to make sure the fire department signs off on it.
Yeah, we'd be happy to work with the fire department.
Yeah, I mean, it looks decent, but.
Another question I had just in looking at the plan was the location of the proposed dumpster area with the enclosure. I see that's, you know, it's, I see where it is now, but it's in, to me, I'm always just thinking of if I own a home right there, even though it's 38 or 40 feet away from that, is there alternative location opportunities for the dumpster area that would be further away from homeowners? I know there's a screen wall there, the six foot, so that visibly that addresses that, but just whatever.
So there are several things that go into determining the location of the dumpster, obviously. I mean, we can't put it too far away because the people living in the building, I mean, especially in the wintertime, we don't want them to have to go too far, you know, trying to drag the garbage out to the dumpster. So there needs to be some access there. And then obviously garbage trucks need to be able to get in and get it. We can look at moving it, but yeah, those things already went into consideration. We do have, there's a dumpster enclosure, so there's a white vinyl fence around the dumpster itself, and then there's actually a second fence, just the straight fence that is shielding the parking lot and the dumpster enclosure from neighbors.
I don't know how much of a material concern it would be to homeowners, but you know, if, you know, on the east side of the existing St. Mary's building, you know, if the, there's a, it looks like the parking lot, there's a 20-foot width there that would, if you were to relocate there, that would allow or permit a truck to have that clearance to come back and unload and load. Again, I don't know if it's a material issue or not, I'm just thinking if I was a hypothetical homeowner there, I just.
Yeah, I, so, and I understand what you're saying. This again would fall into some, like the same category as the access and the stormwater where it's, would actually be on a neighbor's property, even though Christopher owns both properties right now, they could sell one or both in the future. I mean, that's always a possibility. And I'm not saying they have plans, I have no idea. But the other thing is, instead of being close to these neighbors, now you're putting it close to the St. Mary's neighbors. I mean, you're moving it closer to just the neighbors on the other side. But we can definitely take another.
It may not, it may not matter at all.
Yeah. How often is that serviced?
Probably at least twice or three times a week.
It would be, yes, at least a couple times a week. I believe, yeah, for most of our buildings, I believe it's twice a week picked up.
Correctly, St. Mary's gets picked up twice a week at 7:30 a.m.
Yeah, so nothing should be really soon.
To have that in your backyard at 7:30 a.m., 40 feet away, not only with the truck and the dumpster being dumped with the backup beepers.
A different alarm.
I understand that putting it on the other side of the building may be an inconvenience to the other residents, but.
Sir, I appreciate your input, but you're technically out of order.
Sorry, just add light to a lot of misinformation.
And I think that that's why we're posing these questions, to get a clear idea. Are there any other questions from? The, I'm trying to, you know, without being able to float in the air, there's quite a bit of trees and brush toward the rear portion of the property closest to the wetland area. Intent is to remove what, if I was standing today looking south, I guess, it sort of curves out into the property, that foliage?
You're talking.
Right. That's where that is. Right. I just wanted to get clearer in my head. How many, how much distance is it from where you're proposing the end of the building to the end of the actual property?
Up this way? Yes. I don't have that distance. I could go measure it, but you know, the property's very large, it's over six acres, and it extends to the school in that direction, so I'd have to go measure.
Remember to mention the sidewalks in the previous discussion, was that, that's one I couldn't bank any back on then?
Talking about sidewalks and both on the facility grounds essentially, and I think there was a note in the engineers memo about connecting to the existing Smokey Hollow sidewalks.
Yeah, so there's a recommendation in that letter of connecting, and I'm assuming right out here to this existing sidewalk. And we can definitely put something in to connect that. Was there a question about the proposed sidewalks on site?
Well, that's detailed in your drawings. I just was trying to catch up from last meeting, sorry.
I didn't know, because there, the front part of that parcel isn't owned by you, right? There's like a little piece on Smokey Hollow.
You're talking about this property line?
Right.
That does a job right there?
Right.
Yeah, so the access comes off of the driveway that currently goes to St. Mary's. So, and that's the part that I believe they were talking about as far as an access easement would be needed to.
Right, got you.
To maintain use of that driveway.
Were there other things, Greg, that you wanted to?
Not really. I mean, our letter, I mean, it seems to be like, it may seem like there's a lot of comments on the letter, but it's really cleanup type stuff and maybe things that the board may want to look at in the detail. In general, everything seems workable or, you know, with some minor changes, the sort of things we've asked for can be added. One thing that we did not mention is where the trees are going to go towards the residential properties. Kind of be nice maybe to firm that up just a touch, even if it's only like three feet or so, just kind of, when you landscape that and grade it, just to.
On the north side?
Just to bring them up a little bit, on the north side. We don't like big berms because they tend to dry out. But, you know, if you, if, when they, you know, since the trees are already gone there, you know, add a little fill in there and make it kind of a swooping little berm and stuff. With the trees planted on it, just add a couple, three feet of additional height right off the bat and a little character to it.
All right. So just for clarification, you're talking up here in this area?
Yep.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you've got some couple of big trees, so you want to, we don't want to fill around those, but you know, as we're grading it, just add a little shape to it and maybe try to bring up a couple feet, a couple, three feet in there would just help right off the bat. Other than that, most of the comments were just a need for some clarifications, additional information, at least with the plan you're seeing.
Right. Greg H., did you have any comments at all?
Not at this time. I mean, it's, you know, as far as zoning and code compliance, it's in line with what's, you know, what our zoning allows, and it's a planned development district, so, you know, this board has the purview to set other zoning.
Right. So, you know, by being a PDD, it allows the planning board to set specific design requirements similar to other projects that this board has managed.
Can I ask for one bit of clarification?
Sure.
Because I was, there was a comment in the letter I saw about showing the required setbacks. When I was looking through the code, I didn't see that there were required setbacks being part of a planning and development district, a PDD. So I just, just want a clarification, when it comes to those kind of things, is there a zoning district that we should look to, such as R1 or R2? Or is it purely up to the decision of the board?
I mean, it's up to the decision of the board to mitigate their impact on the neighboring properties. I mean, that's why you have the PDD and.
The setbacks vary under historic village code. In fact, Greg and I had.
Yeah, I mean, for this instance, if you were looking at the R2 or other residential zones, they'd be looking at probably an eight-foot side yard setback against the homes on Edgewood, which would not be something that this board or the neighbors would, or even this, you know, developer would want.
Right.
So, you know, front and rear yards are 30 and 40 feet depending on the zoning district. So, you know, that 40-foot measurement is, you know.
Right.
Pretty good across the board.
Yeah. And the setback, because some neighbors, neighborhoods have a setback, starts from a different spot. Some center of the road, some property lot, you know, it's variable. But recent history, this board is, as Greg was saying, looks for minimum setbacks that are reasonable to the character of the neighborhoods. We know that 40-foot setbacks or 50-foot in a residential area, you know, in the, most parts of the village aren't the case, right? 80% of the village wouldn't fall within that. But I think we look at it as a project-to-project basis that way. And I think the feedback in previous meetings, members of this board, and from the community talking about, you know, an appropriate setback, there's already foliage and trees there, you're looking for a park-like atmosphere for your residents, you know, all these things, I think, come together to speak to, you know, the design that you have is in the ballpark, if I can generalize that way.
Yeah, okay. Appreciate it.
I want to thank you, both of you, and Christopher Communities in presenting over our last several meetings, and we've had members of the public as well, and you've been very responsive to them. We've had quite a lot of good ideas, comments coming from folks, and you've been very responsive to that, and I appreciate that. Jamie, is a point of order, there are still outstanding things, but can the board act tonight to give a level of approval or what's the?
So what we, what this board needs to do is to actually come up with, it really needs to be like a site plan, like it's final. And then it's going to get referred to the town board for adoption of the PDD, which is going to be final. So I don't think we're ready for that, however, what you may want to consider is, and it's not required because there'll be a public hearing at town board, but if you want to have a public hearing.
Is that for La Madre?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Yes, for this.
Because the PDD that exists still needs to be authorized for this particular use?
Correct. This is going to be, there really isn't a PDD.
Right, until there's a project to wrap it around.
It's eligible, and it needs to be adopted as final, not by this board, but by the village board.
It becomes its own zoning law.
Right.
Right. So I think that when we've done this before, this board sort of vets out all the public by putting it out for a public hearing and just making sure that everything is, like an official public hearing, I know there's been members of the public, but there may be other members of the public, and it'll go out for the appropriate notice and publication so that you have the final input. And then, you know, at the next meeting, maybe it will be ready, but it really needs to get the final blessing of the engineer and all the details, and then, then it goes to town board, and then there is an official, another public hearing. This is just if you want.
Right, I was going to say the village board has to hold its own public hearing.
They do, they do. But, but the, but the great reliance is upon what this board is referring.
So if we were to get the answers per the engineers and we have a site plan in time for our next meeting, it's possible we could hold a public hearing at that next meeting?
You can hold it, right, I mean, I think there's enough now to hold it, no matter what. What I'm thinking is it can even be that very night, you can even accept it if, if the engineer has done all the details and if you're satisfied, and then there could be a referral that night.
One thing we normally look for, I was just going through the plans again, is a photometric lighting plan that shows how that light spills on the property, making sure that it doesn't spill over onto any residential. There's not too much of a concern about, well, maybe there is in the future if this property is ever sold off, you know, you don't want this property even spilling. If this property is ever sold off, you know, you don't want this property even spilling on to the St. Mary's property. With the lighting spilling over on the St. Mary's property.
It's gone. Because you've got the property line right there.
I'm not sharing.
But like, one of our, one of our concerns was, I'd like to see a grid, because I think the grid tells me where it really ends.
Yes.
In more detail, and probably ask for back shields on those lights, even though they're pretty good, because I don't need anything lit behind that curb anyways, so. I mean, I think, I think those are all things that we can probably work out very easily, you know, in the short term. And definitely have something that's much more refined, if not final, you know, in a final format that you could, that's approvable if you'd like to go that way by the next meeting. I mean, it's up to them, but I mean, you know, next week we can sit down or do something and, you know, give, give clarifications on these things.
Right. So I think we need a motion to set a public hearing for our next meeting of September, last, secretary, what day that falls on?
September 27.
September 27.
Yes, September 27. So a public hearing on the La Madre site plan project for Smokey Hollow Road at our September 27 meeting, to be held at 7:00 PM. Do you have a motion?
Oh.
Second by Donna. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried? Right.
John, if I could ask, I don't know if this is, you know, we're not in order, but are we able to receive any input from homeowners whose homes above the property tonight? Or is that what this public hearing would be?
Yeah, the public hearing is really, you know, the purpose of that.
Okay.
Not, I'm not trying to dissuade anybody from speaking, but to make it fair and following our Roberts rules of, of order. That is the appropriate time, and not just in, if you want to, you know, public hearings, people usually think of someone showing up and speaking, but you can also submit written documents, and they can be the same thing, and you can speak to those as well. Do you have any questions?
I do, is, is the intent for this board to be the lead agency for the secret process?
Yes.
Yes.
And when do you expect that process to start, or to declare your intent?
So we, we can declare the intent tonight, sure, and we'll, and we'll do the, we can do the secret before the public hearing at the next meeting. We'll have all, much more information then from Greg. So we can, we can entertain that now. I was thinking about doing it next time, but that's fine.
Sure.
So...
So it would...
Be a motion to declare the planning board the lead agency, so we can take that motion?
Second?
Well, I, well, someone is...
I know, I need to make the motion that we declare ourselves the lead agency in the La Madre project. Do I have...
Yeah, second Terry Mary. Terry Mary.
All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions?
And also the engineer, excuse me, I'm sorry, had asked for the long form.
Yes.
So if you can do that, thank you.
Okay. Anything else, so, on that? Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, thank you, Lord, and I really stand. Our next item of business is discussion regarding the 19 Phillips Street project. It's a proposal to build ultimately 140 units, initially 70 units.
We've got a lot of questions about that traffic study.
Yeah, well, a couple of things, a couple of things before...
We had a snapshot of one, two periods of one day.
Right.
Which is the last day of class at St. Mary's School, and we don't know what the overall attendance was that day at school.
A couple of things before we go...
There's, there is, nowhere is near enough information there to make an educated guess.
Just a couple of things before we raise the points. The planning board has been asked to make a recommendation to the village board on changing the zoning, which was originally requested as an R2. My sense, and we can get consensus here among the board, that, again, as we were doing with La Madre, a project like this is more appropriately placed in its own PDD that would give the board and the village much more control over ultimate design, whether or not the village goes forward with it, and/or the planning board makes a recommendation for or against the change of the zoning from residential 1, R1, to a PDD, not to, to R2, essentially. As I told the mayor at one, at some point in this process, would let him know what, whatever this board decides, whatever we vote on as far as a recommendation after our discussion, and I would also pass along to him whatever the vote was that we had, whether it was, and I'm not speculating at all, you know, all of us for, all of us against, a 4-3, something like that, just to help convey to the village board, you know, some sense of what we were talking about and that decision. Before, Mike, we talked about, and I want you to express your concern about the traffic study. We did receive a couple of things today, supporting letters from John Mannion and Bill Magnarelli. We also have received a report, a couple of resolutions from the Onondaga County Planning Board. Hopefully you've all had an opportunity to read and review those. Just trying to, so that we're all on the same page. We also received the traffic study from the developer. Other reports that we received, we're just trying to make sure we're not missing anything. Our engineers provided a couple of letters, I believe, with information and questions about the actual project. And we do not have, we're still working off the original plans. This wasn't a multi-plan version since the last time we met. Those last plans do reflect a move of, there was like a community clubhouse thing that was moved to a different part of the property. But I think that was, that was the only specific thing that way. The, there was a couple of other things that I wanted to mention. The, I had asked the village to provide some other information, particularly on the assessment of the property. I'm trying to find that. The estimate is that if 140 units are built, it has an estimated assessment of approximately $8 million. And I can't find, because I don't have a piece of the paper. There it is. That, the assessment, the annual assessment on a $4 million property would be 289,000. Eight million would be 579,000. And the assessor also, to do the math, if a hypothetical 20 single-family homes were to be built on this property valued somewhere between six and seven million dollars, purely hypothetical, would generate about 434,000. I wanted that just as a, as an element of the economic impact to the village. There was also a question by the deputy mayor regarding the availability of water. We did request a report from Chuck.
We, we've talked about it, it's not, it's not that simple.
Yeah. Right.
It's not that simple. There's no immediate crisis of that sort, you know what I'm saying? I think what, you know, we've got these that are proposed or whatever, I think a better study really is, you know, what is the full development potential of the village?
Yes.
And that's a little more complicated for everybody to do. The short answer is eventually the, if we're going to need more, more water.
Right.
You know, more wells or whatever are stored. But, and it's not like, it's not like this is going to turn it over the hill tomorrow.
Right, and I think the number was something like 550 per plant approved, or...
513 are either proposed or already approved. So about half are already approved, the other half are in proposal.
So the immediate, and then potential demand would be about 250, something like that. But again, I, I wanted the board to be able to have that information and helping to make a decision as a, as a factor.
There's also Chief Weapon Check's commentary, too.
Again, to give a perspective, that's probably somewhere between a 5 and 10% increase on water demand than from what the village currently puts out on a typical day.
This property?
No, no.
All of the... Okay.
You know, so it's not, it's not a drop in the bucket. But, you know, it, it, it's a little more complicated of a study than us just sitting there going, yeah, I mean, if they went online tomorrow, we'd have no problem serving them. If 500 went online, you know, would that, you know, affect us during peak periods or something like that?
You definitely see a difference in peak periods with water pressure.
Well, it's, we're going to, you know, I mean, there's always talk about, you know, expanding the capacity to supply water to the village, you know, down the road, because even with that, the existing wells, they start deteriorating, we start needing to replace them, you know. So it's a little more complicated study than that, and to be perfectly frank, we, we've been on board for a little over a year, and we're just, we're just getting our hands around everything that's there.
Sure. And it's useful in itself, because I, we have a lot of new members in here as well, so having, you know, just some of that. Obviously, the traffic, I think, surfaced as the biggest concern of neighbors, others, people I wouldn't consider neighbors, but are also impacted by the traffic. Mike brings up some interesting points, and you can further, you know, detail your thoughts on that. There was, in the county's resolutions, one of the things that they called for, suggested was a more village-style layout, instead of a, more of a suburban curved roads, more of a village grid. And I don't recall much more from the county's resolutions.
Leaving as much trees as you can.
Right.
General, you know, comments that they normally make, handling stormwater appropriately, things like that, so.
Right. But, interesting points that way. So, Mike, you were kicking it out.
Those kind of things would definitely require a little more refinement of their site plan. You know, I think what, what they did is, you know, just take a kind of goal view of the site, and say, okay, we have a facility here, 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 got some for grading, you know, to get to a point like that, they've got to really give a little more detail in there.
Right, and I, I'll just add that I did, in talking with the mayor and others about the village performing a larger traffic study, not just of Onida Street and Phillips, but really village-wide, because we're, we're likely to have other conversations with other developers about the same kinds of things. We did have a meeting last week with the school district that's very interested in mitigating their traffic problems that really are post-COVID but ongoing, where people are dropping their kids off every morning. And, you know, they recognize that there's traffic backed up to the railroad tracks many days. They're looking at solutions and then talking to, you know, neighbors and everything else, and going through a process, even creating space on their campus for turnarounds or rerouting of traffic just to expedite that. They don't see that going away. Even without the school, Onida is a pretty busy street. And, you know, the four corners, busy, so, you know, a village-wide traffic study, I think, is in, is in order. This particular traffic study is, you know, of a limited period of time, we get that, but there's really impact well beyond Onida and Phillips with this project, and really any project that's proposed. Mike, did you want to...
Yeah, that's just, I think that the traffic study that was submitted was a woefully short-term snapshot of what the traffic really is. It was the last day of school of allegedly full classes, I'm not sure exactly. You know, we don't know what the school attendance was that day, if it was partial or full attendance, it was, you know, were there half days? I don't know. One of the other things I've, I've noticed is this week, is that, is the state doing the traffic counts?
Don't know. I've got to follow it to SMTC.
It goes all the way out to, out 31.
There's tubes everywhere.
Yeah.
And if they're doing it now, like you're saying, there's no school.
Right.
The numbers are not going to be great, you know, or, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I noticed that yesterday.
They were setting them up in the village on Sunday, and they go all the way out 31.
Yeah.
And they're, and they're all over.
White pines, that's why they're all sitting there.
I guess this would qualify me as being elderly, but once upon a time, the school was looking at putting a second entrance. Basically, when they closed off the Oswego Street entrance, when they did all the work there back in the 70s, they were talking about putting a second entrance into the school property so that they wouldn't have to rely on Onida Street. Now admittedly, that was probably over, probably close to 50 years ago, but I think that that's something that the school, we should ask the school to look to see what they can do to help on a traffic problem.
The conversation we had, just as, for information, was, they ideally would like four entrances, one, north, south, east, and west, and they're currently landlocked, but they do have a few options in looking at that.
They can just for one entrance.
Yeah, I, I do think that we did get a note from the school about attendance on the last day, which I think they said was like 95%. I do have a copy of it. You know, that, those are reporting requirements of the school district. So it was not a, it was not a notarized thing, it was an email. So, but, yeah, point taken on that. Are there any other thoughts? And I know the, the letters that we received from our assemblyman, they're both...
Yeah, well, they're from the funding source, right? Is HCR your funding source?
Yeah.
Right. Right, and, you know, the study of having, that there's a need for, this is not low income, it's income challenge, it's not...
It's affordable.
It's affordable housing. And we did outline, you know, what the rents would be between eight, like six and 1100, something like that.
650, 675.
Right.
It's also through the MI index.
Right.
Yes.
Which is a countywide. We also heard from the developer that a large number of the potential tenants are folks that are already living in Ballmansville, or are folks that would essentially be upgrading, that are rent-challenged. For the, our legislators' letters notwithstanding, there is certainly a demand for this kind of housing. As we saw with La Madre, they have a different audience, but there is a very high demand for that particular audience. And not surprisingly, Ballmansville is a... And not surprisingly, Ballmansville is a destination that developers are looking at as being a positive and welcoming place with the kinds of services to support these kind of folks. So with that, I ask for, you know, other questions?
No, I just have a question for the engineer about traffic studying. How much higher would the trip generation number be? Do you have offhand?
I think it's about 30%.
Would it, the low rise as opposed to mid-rise?
Yeah. It's a significant difference. Yeah. I'm trying, I'm trying to remember. We were looking at, I don't have it in my folder, but I think it's about 25, 30% higher. It definitely doesn't qualify as mid-rise. There's a difference mid-rise. It's typically more of an urban environment, you know, a lot more options for trend, for, for walking, transit, that sort of thing. So this definitely qualifies as a low-rise and more of a suburban type location.
Thank you.
Yep.
Others? You had, have you?
From, this, this is a development group. James Trashin from CHA were the engineers. Justin Morando is the developer. You know, our initial application came into the village board for R2 based on conversations that we had with mayor's office and village staff. And subsequently, we submitted and a referral came to the planning board. I know there's been a bunch of discussion about, you know, R2 versus PDD. So this came as a referral. So I just go to the traffic study. We were proactive in the traffic study when this application was going in, figuring out, it was something that could be requested. Coming off a village road, typically a lot of villages, in any impact, there isn't going to be a traffic signal or a change in, you know, what goes on with traffic in that area. But we felt it was prudent to do a traffic study. So we reached out to the county DOT and the state DOT and asked them what they wanted us to look at, count, you know, and, and we have correspondents from the state DOT. So we did it on the last day of school. Because when we talked about it, when we got the project, it was like three days before, you know, school was to end. If we did a traffic study in the summer, you know, my statement is the board would be like, school wasn't in session. I live in Radisson. I know the school. My, I have a son who's a senior who drove every single day. And there's days where I had to drive my, you know, sophomore to school and he's sitting in the traffic. So the generator of traffic and the traffic concern in the village is based on the school system. And it's good that the school is talking to folks about stuff. In a development like this, there'll be an increase in trips generated from a site. But the impacts on traffic, on stop sign intersections, isn't going to warrant it to go from a stop sign to a traffic signal. Greg, you, you know, I can come sit beside you over here. But like, it isn't, there isn't a warrant to do anything else. It's just a knowledge of, you know, the delay time sitting at a traffic signal goes from 12 seconds to 16 seconds during typical days. But anyone who lives in B-Ville and goes to B-Ville realizes between, you know, like 6:30 AM and 8:00 AM, because all the parents drive their kids to elementary school now. They don't put them on a bus. All the kids have cars now. They all drive. So there's a lot more car traffic than there was bus traffic. Then number, number two that, you know, people are dealing with in terms of traffic is the relocation of the bus garage to a different location where bus tr- trips are different than they were in the past. Those are global issues of traffic in, in the village that are separate from our project, you know. So we're here just hoping, you know, for a referral back in a positive light. And if you don't, and if there's concerns, we understand waters. We had a meeting with the entire group of staff, professionals. You know, the planning board chair was there as well to talk about what is needed for a referral in terms of a water study, which Greg has spoken about, stormwater, anything we do on this project, pre versus post would match. If there's stuff with Tannery Creek, we can over-design, we can hold back additional water. But, you know, if it is an R2 that you want to see and you want to see a PDD, so there's more control, then there's greater level of detail that we need to do. And an R2, it's a request, it is requesting its own change. We give a preliminary plan of what we would like to do, but ultimately, we would be back here to you again. So, you know, I, we, we've been asking, or at least I have, for the past few weeks since our meeting, there's sort of like, what is the direction that we need to do? Is there additional studies? Is there different additional information? Is there stuff that can be helpful to the, the village board and the village planning board in the process? So we're, we're here tonight on a fact-finding mission because I just learned about the meeting on Friday afternoon when I was talking to Greg, just saying, hey Greg, you know, do I need to reach out to Greg about water system analysis or what is needed on traffic, you know, in the global sense? Do I need to reach out to the SMTC set up a global meeting? Because we, we just want to help the process along. And if there's concerns that the board has, we're willing to look at them, you know. The project in front of you also will have traffic impacts where they are located off, you know, the road coming down to the intersection. So I think that's part of the global, you know, concern as well. And we're not here to speak negative about their project. They're two similar projects. You know, we'd like to see both of them. But if there's stuff that we can do to help your decision-making process, that's why we're here. And so we weren't trying to sneak in a traffic study. We were being proactive. If we had a lot more days, you know, we could have done two weekdays and a Saturday. So you could have seen traffic down the weekend as well, you know. But those are the things we're willing and able to do on this project. So.
Thank you. I think, you know, the, the issue of the traffic was clearly a, a big one and, you know, the amount of potential problem with the schools, you know, having their, they have a traffic problem. And I, I expressed early on that the issues with traffic with this project and any other project are, you know, we as a village are likely to be against projects that add traffic because we have a traffic problem already. And that doesn't mean it's not a factor in whatever decision this board makes or the village board makes. But it speaks to, you know, is there a potential for stagnating growth because we have a larger problem that we haven't addressed? And what are the outcomes for that? I was very, you know, favorably impressed by the school, you know, looking, they're looking for any and any way to mitigate their problem. It's a big problem for the school. And, you know, they're open to a lot of different things. They have some deep pockets too for, you know, certain mitigation things that way. And they're open to that. But I, again, I don't think it's just the school. That if the school solves its problem, we're going to solve all the traffic problems in the village. It's, I think, more than that. So that's a factor. Any other thoughts or questions for developer? If not, I, I'm going to make a resolution, Jamie, that I'll put for a vote. And based on our referral, based on what we know, what we've read and taken in from this, I'm referring, providing a recommendation to the village board. I would move that we recommend the village board, if it were to act, allow a PDD.
Or a development district, yes, that it would be zoned for that.
For this project.
Not for this project, that it would be, be zoned to that and then it comes back, back, right? That it can, that can, a PDD can go there, right?
Right, that the, that the, that they, let me start over. Recommend that the village of Ballmansville Board change the zoning from its current R1 to PDD.
Correct. Period.
Period.
And then, and that's all. That's the motion, okay? Just to understand, then it comes back and then it, it's going to go back to the board for the final adoption of the actual PDD.
Right.
So there's a lot more to do.
Right.
But what this board is trying to say is it's, it's not suitable for its R1 designation anymore, that it's been looked at and that it would be suitable for a PDD.
Right.
As opposed to.
Why are we saying it's not suitable for an R1 anymore?
Well, just the basis of my resolution.
Okay.
Right?
Well, that's.
We haven't formulated on that.
If, if this, I, I mean, it's a discussion. If this board thinks it should stay R1.
Right. I'm just putting forward.
Then it should not go, then it should not, you know, be changed.
It should pass this one.
And it stays R1 and somebody tries to develop in a single family. What I had heard previously is that it's probably better to be rezoned as a, as a PDD. And then this board determines what that PDD is going to look like.
Right. And our, our.
It doesn't have to be this. If, if, if this board doesn't think that it's suitable, but that it would be a PDD, not an R1.
Right.
And a PDD could be a mixed use. It can be single-family, multi, but you might not have a developer who's willing to do it. We do know this developer is willing to do something similar to what's here.
Right. And I put word of the resolution that way to give us something to discuss and to vote on, right? So, and it's as a recommendation.
Correct.
The, only the village board can act to change that. They're relying on some input from us, obviously. But I put that resolution out there. If I have a second, then we'll have a discussion and then we can vote on that.
Second.
Thank you. Just discussion.
If I can just, again, excuse me, by way of example, the, the former project we were just looking at, it's already zoned for PDD, right?
Right.
And so now we go and we do it and we're like, okay, now adopt this PDD, like adopt this. This, in, in order to kind of commence that discussion, they have to zone it as appropriate for PDD.
Was that parcel a PDD once before?
It was.
Yeah.
The parcel was a PDD. I think it was, was it 1990? And it was, uh, it was either 90 or 99. I can't remember which now, but it was zoned a PDD and it was basically townhomes. It wasn't, it wasn't very good PDD.
Was PDD, does the, what the developer think that, that was considering townhouses and condos in there?
Right. The PDD was never very well-defined, not like it should have been. And since it had never moved forward, the site plan was null and void anyway. And the village board decided to take it back to the R1 so that we start from square one.
So, so the PDD wouldn't be, like, in perpetuity? It would be tied more to this specific project?
Well, it would be, it would be eligible for PDD. It's like it, it wouldn't be R1 anymore. So this developer, anybody can come in and say, I want to do a PBB, right? I want to do a plan and the, and then the plan becomes the, becomes the final plan development district or the, the Phillips.
So the, the PDD enables the board, the planning board, to consider a wide variety of, of uses and geometric restraints on the property. And the board can spend time and work with developer to come up with a plan. And then that plan goes to the village board. And the village board can sit there and say, no. Or they can say, yes. You know what I'm saying? So it just, it's something that just gives a lot of flexibility. But it doesn't do what the R2 does, which gives very minimal protections as to what that site will look like.
And I, you know, my reason in wording it this way and making this recommendation for the village board is that long-term, PDD is the most likely to provide the village with a good planning and development options for that parcel, whether it's this one or not. And I don't base that solely on this project, but on the history of that parcel being empty. Folks like to come and say, oh, they should put houses in there. Well, there's no one willing to, you know, build those houses. Then it's, it's not, it's not viable that way. The village does have interest in generating development that's planned and in good, you know, matching form for generating revenue and providing a, you know, a growing, thriving place to live. I don't see whether this is a townhouses as proposed, apartments, or single-family homes, or something in between. The school district has clearly got the capacity and they've expressed that. There are some concerns about water that are, again, part of a larger study, traffic, part of a larger study. I believe that those things can be addressed if this is, the zone is changed to a PDD essentially. I think keeping it as an R1 is a, really a prescription for keeping it undeveloped in, in near perpetuity. So that's why I make that recommendation. Right. Well, and that, and that's, right. What I'm saying, you know, as.
I was thinking for myself, just saying.
But we are, right. As a village that is land, mostly landlocked, and we've acquired and grown a little bit. But, you know, maximizing the limited space and potential tax base of, of the village. That, that's, that's my argument.
I mean, what would be the downside of a PDD? It seems to me like it's a win-win. You know, you have so much flexibility.
Right. I, I think.
Takes a longer time for the developer.
Well, yeah, it's, it's harder for the developer. Some would say, you know, it can be, you know, detrimental to de- development of a certain kind.
It can be highly, highly subjective, you know, if this board thinks is appropriate. That's a, that's an issue.
But I think we have to be custodians to the village.
Correct.
You know?
Yeah. Right. And, you know, we are, we're still in the early days of, you know, putting together a comprehensive plan that takes away some of the vagaries of just pure whim or gut feeling. You know, the whole idea of that is to codify much of what the village has implemented to date in a document that is broad and can be presented to potential developers as, these are the standards and here's what we're looking at. Without that, we have other less sharp tools to sort of express to potential developers what exactly we will do, other than our previous action as a village. I, I think the village in the past five, 10 years anyway, has shown good examples of, of development. And there are PDEs within that that aren't extreme or, you know, onerous, necessarily onerous.
I think the PDD gives an opportunity for developers and the board to work together to come up with the best option for the village. If at that point, what the board wants is not suitable for the developer's pockets, plan, whatever, you know, then maybe it doesn't happen. Maybe there's compromises. But it does afford us an opportunity to work with them to get something that works for them and for the best, which I think is important.
All right. Let me also bring up that the plan that was proposed, something similar in the R2. Hey, if you're happy with what they're going to put in an R2, you would have very little say about it, you know, a little landscaping, a little architecture, whatever.
I won't vote for R2.
Then, but I, I just wanted to kind of explain. And, and you would say, go back to the town board and say, we don't recommend R2. You didn't have to have that vote. That's not the motion on the table. But then the, the town board could say, you know what? We really want development here and we, so R2 it is. So by coming up with some kind of a positive recommendation, that's also bringing, bringing planning where planning should be, which is the planning board of the village.
Right. There have been times when that has happened.
I, I don't know the mind. Trust me, I do not know the mind of the, of the town board.
Well, it changes. Different people think differently.
Right. Right. So that, to, to put forth something positive is, from a planning perspective, is from experienced people who have, who have done planning and now even though many of you are new, I think you get it. You get what happens on planning boards and, and that's what this board is supposed to do.
Yeah. And I, I, I thought about it too, that the village board is ultimately responsible. And as the planning board, we don't want to either corner them or commit them to things, you know, not that we do. But to state as clearly as we can, as Jamie said, the positive course that is broader than this particular project, even though that's what brought it to, what brought it before us.
Well, that's why the comprehensive plan helps.
Right.
Yes, true. But there is a body of planning that has been done. Yes, true, but there is a body of planning that has been done.
Yeah, but it helps provide some guidelines. So, you're not reinventing the wheel all the time.
It's been a nice warm up for that company.
Well, it helps everybody.
Yeah.
You know, it's not my.
It helps the developers too.
Yes. Any other comments on this resolution? Call for a vote, all those in favor of recommending that the village board change the zoning from R1 to PDT?
PDD.
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 What did I say?
T. You said it a million times.
DDT, PDD, Plan Development District. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I need a roll call on this, because you want, you wanna give a specific recommendation to the village board. So, I thought you'd wanna break this down?
Sure.
Or unless it's unanimous, is it unanimous?
Well, it's great.
I couldn't tell.
I couldn't tell.
Oh, yeah, I just said, all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Okay, everyone, okay, it was hard to tell.
It was hard.
It was hard to tell. No, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I saw board three.
Go back to your other board.
Thank you. We have.
We're talking about you behind your bathroom.
Every, every month we talk about you.
We had a, that, that ends old business, for new business, Greg sent me a couple of things. I don't know if he sent that around about the gate or.
No, just to you, just to kinda see where, want me to bring it up?
Yeah, let's bring it up.
So.
It's not a big deal.
Right.
But I wanted.
B-Ville Supply currently uses a chain and an A-frame sign to close their parking lot in the evenings, weekends, whatever. They want to install permanent steel gates that swing open and close, similar to what we have in Village Square. They won't be bright blue probably, but just wanted to see if, if, if I can tell them to go ahead, what this board might wanna see. Also, they want to put a, an accessible ramp at their entry.
Yes.
And I wouldn't say that we could bar them from doing that, but I don't know if this board really needs to see something like that. I mean, it's gonna be as wide as their steps are, it's gotta come out the 1 and 12 pitch. It's into a hash marked parking space already.
It's gonna come out perpendicular to the building.
Yeah, yeah, that way it's between parking spaces, not along the front.
And not across their loading dock area.
Right.
And the gate itself, it's pretty minimalist and it wouldn't be locked, right? Because that would prevent fire equipment from getting in.
My first question was, you know, is it gonna be locked because you need to have fire access to the property? And they said, no, it wouldn't be locked, it would just be, you know, a physical barrier instead of the chain, the chain inside, so.
And I had, I wanted Greg to bring it up, just so everybody was aware of requests like this, which.
I mean, it's a fine line, you know, between is it a site plan approval or is it administrative?
Right, and it's, and the reason I brought it up, because in the East Genesee Overly District, it says all work on the site that's not purely architectural must be approved by this board.
Where's that district end, Mechanics Street?
It ends at B-Ville Supply.
Which side of the lot?
Spruce Street, no, it ends with their property and at Spruce where Burnderrings.
Including them.
So theoretically, the gate isn't exactly in.
Oh, it's in.
They almost didn't let me in there today to buy my stuff because they wanted the answer.
Wow, what it struck me as though is that it is an administrative determination that, that.
Well, I think particularly that the accessible ramp.
Well, accessible ramp, they really didn't have much of a problem with, it was more the.
And I think, you know, from a point of information, if we need a resolution to actually approve it, I don't, I don't know, but.
I, I would feel like no, I mean, I'm gonna rely on Greg to make sure it somewhat meets some of our village standards for fences and gates, which I don't know that we have one for gates, but.
Do you have a picture?
You know, black, you know.
Right now, they were talking about similar to what Country Max has, and honestly, I don't know what that is, but.
I don't go to Country Max, I go to Agway, B-Ville Supply, Sotoa.
What?
It's a flimsy little two pieces pipe that they join and it's like this.
The type of gate.
The angle that comes up.
Yeah. And that's what we have in Village Square for the, that blocks off our little, you know.
Taking paths.
I mean, that's, that's what I looked up, that's what they basically have out in front of Country Max, so. It's not very invasive, I mean, it's, like I said, it's minimal, I mean, it's, it's not like a big, they're building a fence that they're gonna close up.
As long as fire department knows they gotta cover lock off.
No.
No, it's not locked.
Not locked.
Not locked.
For, yeah, for fire.
Plastic chain or whatever.
Maybe looks better than a chain in a sandwich board setting.
Well, that's what I was thinking too, you know, I don't know how many cars might turn in there and not really see the chain because it's so low.
Yeah.
That could have been a problem. And, and for me, keeping anyone out of that, the rear of that property is a bonus.
Yeah, so, I think by raising it, having this discussion, I fulfill, we fulfilled a requirement.
Okay.
Table, table.
Any other business for bringing it up?
Yeah, it's just, you know, the minor things are.
Yeah, I mean, you're right, Greg, it's. I have one more question, Jamie, if, in the PDD, does it automatically go to the architectural review board too, right? Is that?
That's a good question, we do not know the answer to.
I don't know.
I don't know the answer to.
But I'm gonna find out.
The comment.
Well, nothing's automatic.
Yeah, I know.
No, I'm gonna look it up right now.
I, I, okay, I don't know, I don't know, I'll have to look at that.
It had to do with the commentary on La Madre Landing.
There was, um.
See, I did read all that stuff even though I wasn't here.
Yeah.
The ARB is funny because it, it lists some things and it may not list that one, because the ARB, no.
The things that they go to that I don't know why they don't go to it and.
Yeah, I'm going to the AR, the ARB at some point. Where is this place, all right? Applicability? And Plan Development Zone District?
Yeah.
However.
However.
One thing I don't like is.
However with a comma?
There's no R2 in there. So, if we did, I mean, no.
So, wait, there's.
But no, I mean, we do have R2 districts.
Right, but it doesn't go to ARB?
But it doesn't go to ARB. Now, does Candlewood Gardens necessarily, I mean, you can't see a building from the street really. But like Land Rush Way, you can see all the buildings from the street, so, but that's, that's just one thing I've noticed that, you know, even like,
Well, then, there was a notation about La Madre going to the ARB.
Yeah, they should go to the ARB.
Well, we better get them there.
But it's a referral.
Because it's a PDD?
Right.
Okay.
It's a Plan Development District.
Jamie said it needed to go to the ARB.
That's what I said last time, I, I, I think it does, but I'm not 100% sure.
So, then my next question is, does 19 Phillips need to go to the ARB?
It will.
Eventually.
Yep, if it's a PDD.
And, and the way that it normally, I think the way it says it in the, maybe in the site plan procedures is that it's gotta go within so many days after this board acts.
Yeah.
But then sometimes there are things downtown that get repainted that didn't go there too.
Who?
Nothing recent.
Could it be made a condition of the PDD?
I, I think that, that.
Well, they would absolutely have to go to the ARB to be approved, yeah, for final, you know, approval of the experience.
So, if, well, we're gonna have a public hearing, I don't, I don't know if it'll be totally ready. I think it should go now, vote for comment. Yeah.
I mean, they have, they have elevations.
We do have elevations, I mean, that's, we don't have.
You have Juliette balconies.
We don't have lighting.
We don't have the lighting.
No, that's true.
That's least fictional.
I would, I guess I would count on our engineer doing the lighting.
Yeah, I would get it there, because the lighting that they're missing is some, my gut feeling is that on the backside of building, it's gonna be some simple lighting over doorways and that's what.
Yeah, there's no.
There's no need for anything more than that.
No, but it is missing.
If we're gonna get comments, we're gonna ask them to modify things, I could.
It's two weeks from now, so.
I mean, the elevations, they, they would need to send the materials, physical materials that, that support what they're showing in their reveries.
I'm just saying, it's two weeks from now.
May or may not be available in what they're showing.
The week was really nice and they should, you know, look at something like that. I don't know if you guys have seen that, you know, for your own perspectives, just like. Randall Road, was that Randall Road down there?
Tecumseh, yeah, it's.
Yeah, it's right behind the Brueger's Bagel in Key Bank.
Which project is it?
It's off of Nottingham.
Christopher Community.
Christopher Community, it's on Tecumseh Row.
Tecumseh Row Apartments?
No, I don't know what it's called.
No, it's called Christopher, I, I think if you look it up online, I think it's Christopher Community. It's right behind the Brueger's Bagel, it's very nice, kinda missionally, a little mission-y looking.
Little mission-y, it's, it's got flat board, nice trim and, you know, nice character, it's not vinyl, you know, so.
Maybe, maybe?
What color is it?
Maroon green.
Yeah, it's a maroon color.
Maroon, it's green, it's.
It might be Tecumseh Row Apartments.
It's senior, senior apartments.
I know the architects.
Do you?
And, yes. And the interior designer.
But that's something, I mean, that's something we told them to kinda look at, to the guy or something that will look nice. The board may wanna take a look at and see if you agree, if you don't, you know, shame on us, but, you know. We just, you know, we didn't want something that would just heat, you know, and they were, they were like.
Yeah, no, they generally do a good job.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second motion.
Who's second, you're back.
Mark.
All those in favor?
I.
I firsted. I know you firsted.
Karen.
See you next time.